I'm going to show you how to make a simple machine that can read and write data from a computer. First, we need a computer program. It needs to be able to read and write data from a computer. The first thing we need is a computer program. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer. This program will read and write data from a computer. We need to create a program that can read and write data from a computer.
Is he ready to go? All right, so welcome to tonight's meeting, special meeting. Call the meeting in order for Board of Health. I guess we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, new business, operations planning. I know that we are moving along. So I guess you, Lynn, or who wants to start with what's going on? What we've done since ten days ago at the last meeting?
So we have scheduled a weekly meeting with Ron.
Okay.
So that will be starting next week.
Okay.
And those are on the calendar through at least end of April.
End of April?
That's where tendatively the calendars went out to, just to get this time.
Just for the hold.
Okay.
And the other thing that we talked about is looking to another county as well as Lake, just to see if there's any interest in collaborative discussions.
Okay.
Don't know which counties yet, haven't figured that one out.
Anything else for operations planning?
Well, the only other thing is that Ron directed us to a part of Lake's website, which I thought was really helpful, which kind of lays out the O R C, what health district has to do by law and what it doesn't. And so I've printed it out, but I haven't gone through it in detail yet. But I think that that's something that I'd recommend everybody take a look at. To the extent we want to scale down to meet our budget, I think it shows very clearly some areas that could be targeted.
How did you find that on the website?
We didn't, Ron sent it to us.
Oh, he just emailed you?
Yeah, so it's.
Carolyn, if you want to send it to me, I can send it out there.
Yeah.
Oh, it's all, yeah.
Okay.
There is a blank.
What it does is it ties function to code, so we can understand where in the code the information is.
Got it. Yeah, it's like, it's very helpful. I mean, you know, the only thing is it's a little different in that there are certain things that the county commissioners in Lake require the health district to do. And so I don't know if that's the same for Geaga or not, so we would have to look into some of those functions. Like, for example, the child fatality review board. So in Lake, the county commissioners require that. I don't know if our county commissioners.
Yeah, if I'm remembering, Carol does that one. I don't think she does any, I think she actually does that one.
Okay, but is that required by the commissioners?
I would actually have to ask, I don't know. That's probably long enough ago, it'd be a bit ago.
But there's definitely a lot of no, this is not required.
I think I sent you guys out that one section of the code, the thirty seven oh nine oh eight maybe? Or whatever section it was, it's, there isn't a lot. As I think as Mrs. Brackey mentioned before, it's more of may's and less of shall's, which was correct.
Anything else to discuss?
No, I mean, I think that's it for now.
Okay. All right, so administrator, I'll talk about that part a bit, at least some positions. But, so essentially with our Bamboo H R posting, we have a total of twenty candidates as of today. We had a few new ones come in since our last meeting. So essentially, we are going to, Lynn and I, put our heads together to finalize and look at the list of candidates to determine who we are going to interview. Right now, it's looking like we're going to interview about three to four people for this position. And basically, our kind of goal with this is we're going to have, you know, the initial screening, or excuse me, interviews via Zoom. And the second round will be in-person interviews. And so essentially, I've put in front of all of you a draft of the communication that we will send out through Bamboo H R. And it's just essentially a letter letting them know that we're inviting them to a Zoom interview. This is pretty similar to the template Bamboo has. They have a bunch of templates you can send out extending an interview, et cetera. So I will add that in. But essentially, take a look at that if you guys don't have any complaints or anything. Lynn has been kind enough to devise a potential timeline for things, and we've come up with some potential dates for these Zoom interviews. But ultimately, we are on track with the dates provided on that draft to say we want to do these initial Zoom interviews, really within the next couple of weeks, so that we can ultimately bring people in for in-person interviews around January eighteenth, and we can pretty much still adhere to that timeline of January thirty first regardless, because our goal is to move quickly and, you know, in a calculated and informed way, of course.
So this is for administrator?
This is administrator only.
And that's because of the last meeting, a suggestion by me was made that we do not interview the environmental health until the administrator is hired, because of reports to administrator. The question that I raised at the last meeting was.
Okay, before we go to that, I just had a question about the standard email client. So it says your background meets the criteria we're looking for at this time. Is that true for all the candidates you plan to interview?
So what Lynn and I had done is we created, oh, I printed you have. So we took the criteria from the posting and created a spreadsheet where we did, you know, we kind of separately looked at candidates, and I put checkboxes for things to say. For example, they met the educational requirements. They met everything that we listed as a must-have on our application. There was one thing that said software on there that was very, very vague, and that it was something that, you know, shouldn't make or break a candidate to say that they mentioned the word software, Word, Excel. Obviously, these people can use Word if they're uploading their resume or C V. So to me, that was kind of a negligible point. But essentially, what we did is we looked at the educational requirements, their experiences, the things that we set our must-haves, and then looked at the additional requirements, and based on that filtered candidates to say, here's my thought if I want to interview this person, and, you know, she kind of.
Okay, but did they meet that, those criteria? Did all the people you're planning on interviewing, did they all meet all of the criteria?
What I would say is there has to be some flexibility to that. They all met educationally.
I would agree, so I would change that sentence, is I guess my point. I wouldn't say your background meets the criteria, because I suspect there are people you were interviewing who do not meet the criteria.
There's, there's some pluses and minuses on some.
Yeah.
Nobody's perfect.
No, I agree, which is why I wouldn't, I wouldn't state that.
So how would you phrase it then, rather than?
I wouldn't, I would just take that out.
You would like to extend it.
Your resume has been received and reviewed, and we would like to extend an invitation for initial.
So let's just take that out. And it'll, so it'll just read, received and reviewed, period. We would like to extend an invitation for an initial Zoom interview. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Sorry, I was trying to understand your question a little bit.
There has to be a little wiggle room, because.
No, I totally agree, but that's why I wouldn't say you met the criteria.
Yeah, because they could assume that we're saying, did I meet all of the criteria or some of the criteria?
Yeah.
No, that's good.
And then if later they say, why didn't I get the position? And you say, well, there's so few criteria you didn't meet. Yeah, that's like, well.
And if you would like, we can show the spreadsheets and how, and again, this is, you know, we had another candidate come in. And so we had discussed closing the application, and that we agree with one.
Right.
Yep, so we're going to do that as of today. We have the applications on hold, so we can still review them. But what is the official date we would like to actually close the application?
I believe because they're on hold right now, Adam, can we just close it?
Yeah, so if, so if it's on, if it's on hold in Bamboo H R, that's the, that's close enough to closing. If you close it, you can't, it's not like you hire people out of that group.
So closing it shuts down?
Closing it shuts down like the entire thing.
I understand.
On hold means you actually still email people. It's not going to show up as a closed item.
Okay, could we keep it open till we officially hire someone?
I would not recommend that. We got three more applicants in the last, three or four applicants in the last two days, which means that we want to go to interviews next week.
Yeah, but we got a qualified applicant.
At some point, we have to close it. If anything, we don't think the applicants are candidates, we should reopen it then. But to keep it open means that, in my opinion, if we keep it open, if we find somebody, we need to put them into the mix.
So should we?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's why I bring it up.
So I guess to Carolyn's point, because typically, at least what I've seen is applications do remain posted, and you can apply to them until the selection process.
Yeah.
However, I think from a vetting standpoint, we need to say, okay, here's, we're going to interview this group, we're going to do the Zoom interviews, and let's, you know, either say if those interviews don't go well, do we take the application off hold? Or do we just leave it and say we're not going to review anymore until we've done this initial batch of interviews? I don't know what the appropriate. Because I do see what Carolyn's saying, because that is typically the process. But I also don't want people continuously coming in.
And my experience has been when, in fact, you've identified the candidates you want to, you go through those candidates, and if they don't meet it, you reopen it. If we want to leave it open and just put those aside, aside right now, we can do that.
I would be okay with that, and just say we're not going to review anymore until we complete this first.
Well, I mean, my thought is there has been so few qualified candidates. I mean, there really hasn't been twenty applicants. To me, it's not very many applicants. And three to four interviewed, that's not very many. So my preference, I mean, you guys are obviously, it's your work, so you decide what to do, but I would keep, keep it open until we officially hire somebody.
So I'll say two things. So one is, on both sides, so in this area, twenty is usually actually a pretty good number. But I will say on the other side, what Carolyn mentioned is I need to see them stay open until they hire. It doesn't mean we have to, I'm not saying one or the other. And I understand Lynn is saying where you don't want to have ten come in as you're about to hire somebody, then you say, all right, we're not going to do anybody. It goes both ways. They do stay posted on A O H C and A O E, well, the H one's a different story. On hold, though, they can't apply through the Bamboo H R. Now, what you might see is they'll email Lynn a copy, or they'll fax, most of them will fax, we still fax that copy. You might get them that way. So there's pros and cons to both sides. I say it both ways, so you shut it off because you have enough, so you leave it open because you don't. It's up to, we'll do whatever you, whatever you would like to do.
I think the compromise is that we leave.
Leave it open.
Leave it open, and we do our process now. And if we are not satisfied, or if somebody, you know, comes in and we both agree, and we review them, and we go accordingly.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay.
So can we take it off of them?
Yeah, I can, I can, or I'll go back and put it back on active.
But I don't think our process changes based on.
No.
Any new applicants until we've gone through that.
Yeah.
I think that that's fine, because we do have a timeline to adhere to. Okay, anything else to add to that, Lynn? So we made the, I, like Carolyn's recommendation, I'll take that line out of the draft letter, and I can extend the interview to who we decide.
Right, and we've scheduled a lot of slots.
We're going to do hour-long slots for initial.
Hour-long, hour-long initial meetings. I do have a question going back to last week that I don't believe we have an answer on, and that is, if we go into second rounds, what are we doing to ban out of town candidates? Will we pay their expenses?
I think we cross the bridge if and when we come to it.
And I would have to, I don't think I got an answer back yet from that.
Because if the question is asked by the candidate, obviously.
Because I certainly don't want to give somebody that. I don't have.
Our lead is still out right now. I mean, I can ask the other one that I use from prosecutor's office to see if she can give me an answer. I have two voicemails, I think, today with our prosecutor, the assigned prosecutor, it's not the D prosecutor, the assigned prosecutor. But I can ask, it's an unusual thing, I usually don't see that far away. Maybe Indiana or Pennsylvania, but you don't see like California.
I just want to have an answer prepared for them when they ask if I do come for an interview.
I would be prepared too. What if they ask you, and you go, I don't know?
If I say I don't know, that means a bad.
I'll get back to you, I don't know, just then, I'll get back to you.
Then maybe, maybe what we do, do you think you might have answers by next week?
What I'll do is I will call the other version we used, and I can probably get an answer tomorrow.
So.
Make my text or even.
Actually, what we'll do is schedule the ones that are more local.
Okay.
In case of distant ones.
That's what I would suggest. Why don't we concentrate on the, on the local ones first, if there are any? I mean, if we have to go out of area, then.
Well, you're still doing the first round first, that's via Zoom, so that's not the problem.
Yeah, it's not.
Is that the problem? But if I were the candidate sitting on the other end, it might be a question if I am selected for an in-person candidate, in-person interview.
Yeah.
Who's paying the expenses?
Who's paying the expenses?
No, I agree. And to be honest, I, it's an interesting question. I haven't seen it in health departments before. In cities, I've seen it when it's like a mayor, like a mayor manager type, well, manager, mayors are elected, but manager, I've seen that. Usually, they're headhunting from all over the country.
I believe for sure there's three candidates, I'm not saying three are being interviewed, but one is on my list in Zeta State.
Yeah, let me.
Further than Indiana or.
Let me see if I can get a different prosecutor, give us an opinion on that. I would still, I think it would come down to our decision. I just, I'd rather have a yes or a no versus, you know, us putting ourselves sticky with it.
Do you have an answer to have submitted rather than later? And that's kind of all I have for administrator.
That's all I have, Dan.
So I would just like to say, you know, when we, once we got the notice from Lake, we kind of outlined some different, different paths that we could take. And I think it's good that, you know, we're advertising for, you know, for the positions, but there's other options that I think, being, you know, on this board, I think we can also look at the other options. We certainly don't have to wait, or just do one thing at a time. We can do multiple things, and like the Plan B or C or whatever, where, you know, we're looking for collaboration with the other, with another department or whatever. So those are all things I think that are still on the table as well.
Yeah, absolutely, parallel paths to investigate.
Any other comments?
No, I would just say that we all have to recognize parallel paths at different timelines. I mean, we've already, we've already talked to O D H, and O D H has made it clear that they're not going to talk to us till we've put a plan in front of them. And if we put a plan in front of them, they may not even have to go in front.
Right.
I think they pretty much, O D H is pretty much.
Left us on our own, I think.
Yeah, left us on our own. They're not going to do anything, force us to do anything, jump in or anything like that, so.
And that's virtually the last time too, if I remember correctly. I mean, they told you what the options were, but they said that's the last time too.
Well, last time, they at least talked to us in person. This time, they did not talk to us. I should say in person. They talked to us by phone last time, they did not talk to us this time.
I think it's important for the, you know, for the public to know that, I mean, we are, as a board, we are going to do everything we can in, you know, in the best interest of the county. And we, you know, we are going to exhaust all, all possibilities before I think we come to a, you know, and do what's best.
Well, the other thing that we've agreed to do is to meet weekly so that we can escalate the work we've done.
And, and, you know, and then even, you know, from a financial standpoint and stuff, we have to be fiscally responsible. And I think at the last meeting, we, you know, we, our expenses unfortunately have exceeded our budget, so we have to be conscious of that as well, so.
I think also, real quick, since we've mentioned the planning with the budget, there was, there was a good point brought to, brought to attention is that most, most of you are the, well, you're all in the private sector, we usually talk profit and loss. That's usually how I think most finance people look at it, is, you know, your revenues, your expenses. The question that was brought, which I think I explained earlier, but was, you know, a good point, was we have reserves. The reserves in the public sector are calculated into the cash balances, which is obvious, that makes sense. But the question, or the statement that's brought up was, saying, as if the profit and loss is negative, is not really how developed that is said, or, you know, how it's usually referred to. I think it depends on, on who you're talking to, financial, side-wise. For me, as much as you, I don't like a deficit budget, because it shows we're overspending. Now, if you have the cash reserves, that's what reserve cash is for, but my goal is to make all of you aware that as you go forward, you will draw down that balance. It's not a bad thing.
You can't lie on it.
Right. It's not a bad thing, you don't want to have twenty million dollar reserves. I mean, that's not the goal of the public's money, it's just be held, waiting to be used. But at the same time, my goal with that statement was, if, if we continue down that track, that number grows. And, and Moses was called, abundant caution from my time in Lake when that happened, was like, I, the rear of the board was like, somebody should have said, that number was going to grow. And so I think that's where we look at here and say, but that's not a goal. But there is cash reserves, it can cover that deficit, it can cover that deficit for many years. It's, does the board want to, it's how, how do you want to operate that, I guess is the question.
When you say many years, many years though is not infinity.
No, and.
It's only, it's only nine years.
And that's why I say that, I'm just, I'm used to, I look, I usually look at things as profit and loss. If I see a negative, then that's where I start to focus energy on is why is it negative? Is it, is it miscalculation, or is it, because we're negative? And I bring that to you so that you don't say, hey, five years from now, Adam and I were told it was going to be negative thirty-five, a hundred, two hundred fifty, three hundred, he just said, we're a, we're a little bit below. So I think that's, I, I want to make it clear though, because it was a good, it was a very valid statement that was brought up, because the cash reserve there. I went over the cash reserve number to everybody, it was, it was a very hefty balance, most of it's the COVID, some of the septic things we had, it's there. But again, it's, it's how you want to in the future budget that is what you.
But not all of it can be used, correct? Like, the COVID monies.
Well, the, the COVID money is, so I say COVID money, what it was is, a lot, some of the money came in and offset, um, it, it offset expenses elsewhere, so that money is now available via the general fund or another fund. It's one of those things of, it's, in my opinion, it's a dangerous slope when you just start relying on it. Um, and my analogy is always, it's like you're living on your savings account. Well, at some point, your savings account's not there. You have a healthy reserve, but again, my only, my only purpose that was to make you all aware, you can survive for, for, for many years. It's how many years can you survive, and how comfortable are you all with doing that?
Well, I think this is complicated by, and I, I don't think the, the public in general, and I would be in that bucket if I hadn't been sitting here, but we have an old tax levy. Okay, tax levy is twenty-five years old, so we bring in what, half a million, six hundred thousand a year?
Yeah, six hundred, I think six twenty-three is the number I got from the county auditor.
Okay, so six hundred twenty-three thousand, thought we've ever gotten, but salaries have went up, expenses have went up, which means that six hundred twenty-three thousand doesn't cover it. That is our true source of income.
Yeah, we have a point, we have a point two mil levy, or a point two, yeah, point two mil levy. Um, we're one of the lowest in the county, we're like, we're like the lowest, but there's multiple, there's two, I think two a point two or point two eight, something like that. Um, the one question I do have to ask the county auditor was, on a sheet that I got from him, it says it's a two thousand fourteen levy, which is not twenty-five years old, I have been told twenty-five. Two thousand, sorry, two thousand nine, sorry, two thousand nine. I have to ask if there was like, was there.
We need to investigate that, Carol.
Okay, well, salaries in two thousand nine and salaries in two twenty-two are still different.
And, and the current number he provided us. And the current number provides, if that same levy was approved today, point two mils, it's like seven hundred twenty-eight thousand is brought in, so it's like an extra eighty or ninety thousand, uh, from what we bring in now, to it as a brand-new levy. Uh, now, you have to take out the homes that roll back, because ours actually go down if we have that as well. Um, but it was, it was poor information he was able to provide to us, just gives us an insight where the numbers would be. Because I was curious where point two mil levy is today versus two thousand nine, when that one's listed as, it's a big difference.
Okay, and the other, the other thing that, that worries me too is that the population of this county is right around that hundred thousand mark.
Yeah, ninety-three-ish.
And you start reading the literature, it's become very clear that health districts do not, cannot survive with a small population. And so the whole trend of moving toward larger districts is just kind of out there, and that's the reality of it. Unless the population here grows substantially, which I do not believe, I mean, all we have to do is look at birth rates and things, everything keeps going down. So, um, our population, we're right on the edge of not really being able to perhaps survive.
And that's why I think it's so important to look at other, all options and, and like cross-jurisdictional sharing, like, you know, how we contracted. I mean, I think we, we can substantiate quite, you know, definitely that we did save, you know, there was a cost savings by contracting out services. So we have to be conscious of that and, um.
Well, I.
And, you know, and, but yet still, do what we have to do.
I think it's, I mean, I, I think in general, people think, okay, we transfer to another, let's just say we have an arrangement with another county. Doesn't mean that the costs stay the same. They are somewhat reduced because of doing that.
Right.
Overhead, and I don't think, I mean, people think all the employees go over and they're hired, but there's other expenses that go away.
Right, exactly, exactly.
No, it, it's a hard thing, because it's one of those things I think everybody's fighting with, I mean, whether you're a business or government entity or nonprofit, it's, you know, fifty years away, they sense that one every single county, whereas now, it's like a looking of, do we need a building every fifteen miles? Do we need a different finance guy every fifteen miles? And those are, yeah, like school, you know, schools, police departments, you're seeing that, but, you know, it's, it's a valid question. I think, I think you see it places, and I think we also keep in mind, you look at any county surrounding us, none of them are large counties. I mean, some it's probably the first time you get to a large county. So, I mean, it's always interesting, and, you know, as, as we're seeing here, it's as limited, I mean, salaries and everything else, you know, health insurance has skyrocketed the past ten years.
And there, and there is, there is efficiencies in larger groups of people working together. Um, but, you know, as Rich said, we just need to explore all the options, and I think that is our role is to explore all the options.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I think we should explore like the services we're providing too, because I, I think a lot of these services probably, I don't know what the history is, but probably were provided fifty years ago when the world looked a lot different, you know, when you couldn't get a vaccine at CVS.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, there were less options for some of these services. So, um, I think that could be a way that we could be more fiscally responsible as well, because I, I think the private sector tends to provide these services more cost-effectively.
Well, like you said, fifty years ago, there was probably one, one drugstore per city.
Yeah.
And today, there's, there's at least six, ten, I mean, they're on every corner, right?
There's a field, there's a CVS.
Right, you know, so.
Well, maybe we just need to have a running list of all the various programs right in front of us, and it's something Adam can do, just so we, we as the board, we do not interface with it every day, can see a list of all things. I mean, I know WIC was one of the programs we sent, you know, we don't do here, we don't administer, it's done in another county. Okay, the question is what other, and it comes back to becoming smarter, as I believe we have, but the shell of a May.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I always read that before, and it's, May and Sheldon hit me, so the last couple of years, that shell I gotta do, May I don't have to do, I don't want. But I think we, I would like to see a running list of all the services we provide.
Yeah, and I could, I could cross-check that with the ORC then, and to see what we have to actually provide.
Yeah, that would be nice.
We do have first, I think I mentioned in the one email I sent there, we have first right refusal on certain programs. Um, but there's, the, the shell is very few, I mean, it's mostly tuberculosis, communicable disease, things of that nature. It's, and I think in the ORC, it was just, it was just communicable disease, which includes tuberculosis and rabies and.
Would, would I like to see us continue to provide communicable diseases and all kinds of other health, population health? Yes, I would. But I think I need the complete list, and we need to understand the impact of that.
Yeah.
I think tuberculosis is actually a May, Adam. According to this list, it's, it's a no as far as mandated, except by contract, it was mandated by the county commissioners.
Yeah, it's usually the county commissioners, and they sub it out. Now, the question that came up recently, though, was, so TB here, uh, we actually just had one that, um, it showed up in different, they live in this county, but they work in a different county, they went to that county to test it, um, you know, and, and functioned out that way. Um, but here, we kind of provide some of that, but we don't reimburse things. Where some other counties may say, hey, we're going to cover your hospital visit, or your, not your visit, but your, like, your testing, because they want you tested, because obviously TB is going to kill you.
Yeah, I mean, when I worked in hospitals, it's tested every year for TB, as a requirement.
So.
Still do.
Are we, are we good with everything else?